Oops, what? June 25, 2024 is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This hybrid meeting is being recorded and may be accessed by WebEx. The meeting link is on the calendar at Burlington.org. No members are remote, so we don't need roll call votes. The first item in our agenda is the approval of the warrant. Is there motion?
So moved, second.
It's removed and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. The approval of the meeting minutes is the next item.
So moved.
Second.
Movement seconded. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is public participation. This segment is for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone either online or in the room for that purpose? Moving on, subcommittee reports. Do we have any subcommittee reports? Anything, Jeremy, anything from rec on cleaning up the trash around the edges?
Yeah, so we talked about that actually last night at the Recreation Commission meeting. There's a renewed focus on park cleanup. Of note, some of the comments I've commented recently about some of the school grounds and other parks and facilities. Recreation is currently working through a challenge right now. Both their big mowers, blue U joints, they're being fixed. They're working through with smaller machines. There are loaners to get to it, so they're just not able to cut as many acres as they normally would. So they're catching up as the machines come back online.
All right, was, on the cleanup issue, was there anything new? Because when you talked about it before, it was a shortage of manpower. Is there anything new?
Same challenge remains. So there's a staff of eight that has to address somewhere in the neighborhood of, was it, a couple hundred acres of
Yeah.
grass, woods, ball fields and so forth. So they're looking at other ways to gain efficiencies. And then Mr. Kuna had come up with a few ideas that's being explored with some outside help coming in to address some, at least of the school properties. So we're exploring that further.
All right, well, keep us up to date on that. Are there any other subcommittee meeting reports? No. Ways and Means. Is there a Ways and Means member online perhaps? No? Okay, moving on. Other announcements, Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd love to welcome up Tim McMahon. Many of you got the announcement, the press release that went out on yesterday, Monday. Tim is the new principal at Marshall Simons Middle School. We're very fortunate to have an experienced administrator who applied for the job and wants to come work with us in Burlington. So, Tim, welcome. This is the Burlington School Committee. I'll certainly let them introduce themselves. But we're really excited to have you and believe Marshall Simons is a great school and there's just a lot of resources. And we just think it's a good match. So look forward to working with you. And summer's always a hard time to start because the building seems empty, but believe me, you're going to have a building full of kids here during summer programming. And he already hit the ground running. So we had a professional development day today that Dr. Chen had organized. And even sort of prior to starting, Tim's been here all day. So really appreciate your being here. So thank you. And again, here's the Burlington School Committee, and I'll let everyone introduce themselves, but welcome.
Great, thanks.
Jeremy?
Jeremy Brooks, School Committee Member. Glad to have you and looking forward to all the good things I know you're going to do.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Megan DeVoycek, and I'm very excited that you're here and thrilled that you'll be the principal at Marshall Simons. Thank you so much.
I'm Melissa Sardo, also share everyone's sentiments. I was very happy to hear that we found someone very qualified. So I'm looking forward to you starting soon, and we welcome you.
Catherine Bond, and I'm going to echo what everyone else said. Very excited that you're coming on board and really can't wait to hear, you know, and see what you do with Marshall Simons.
And I'm Chris Monaco, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, everybody.
And so, like I said, in terms of hitting the ground running, so Bob, I think, spoke to you that we have some construction projects underway. And Mr. Brooks is also chairing a community group about the backfield at Marshall Simons, which there's a spot for you on that committee as well. So we're, again, we have lots going on. I wish there'd be sort of a quiet introduction period, but that's just not the case with any school. I'm sure you're used to that. So again, welcome. And I think you had spoken about once after July 1, we get through the 4th, you'll have some office hours or open houses and
Yeah, my plan is to reach out. Is this on? I assume it's on.
Yeah, is the light on?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
No, after, first of all, thank you, everybody. A pleasure to meet you and thanks for opportunities both Dr. Conti and Dr. Chen have been just great the past couple of weeks of this process. And today, got to meet the entire administrative team, which was awesome and a really good feeling, really positive vibe from the group. So, yeah, I mean, I'll be coming officially July 1. Once I get a computer and email address, my plan is pretty simple. Reach out to staff, students and parents. With staff, open office hours, have them come in throughout the summer. Get to know whoever's around who would want to come in and kind of meet informally. And then open myself to coffee hours with parents and students throughout the course of the summer. And then ideally hold an open house for incoming sixth graders at some point in August. And ideally utilize our eighth graders as student ambassadors for that process. But in the meantime, my plan is to get to know the building, get to know my key stakeholders and try to get moving in the summertime. Summertime is challenging, but again, my availability is significantly wide open for the summer. So I plan to be there every day and get things going and prepare our school year well in advance. So I'm excited to get going and excited for the opportunity. So thank you all for your time. Any questions? I'm happy to feel any question if you have anything. If not, I will gladly step aside and let you guys finish your meeting.
Think you already went through that interview process?
Okay. I appreciate everyone's time. Have a good night, guys. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, you have any other announcements, Dr. Conti? Okay, next item on our agenda is learning equity thriving math curriculum review.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Chen and to Dr. Thunder to talk about, there's been lots of work going on with mathematics. I think Lisa has kept the committee up to date. And we have, again, some analysis that's done. And I know this was a lot of hard work, and so, Dr. Thunder, I don't want to, it's important that we share this work, but I also think there's more work to come. So I think that's, this report is going to give us, I think, a better direction so that we can be more targeted in where we put our efforts. So again, Dr. Chen, thank you for all your efforts. And I think this is going to be more of a model of how we do curriculum reviews moving forward. So I'll turn it over to you. Thanks, Lisa.
All right, well, first of all, I just want to thank all of you and also the town for supporting the warrant article when it comes to the curriculum reviews that we're going to be doing for math, also with literacy and also the work that we're going to be having with Dr. John Almerod throughout the year. I especially want to thank, it was kind of funny, I felt like a very great Uber driver because as I was dropping off Dr. Almerod, at the same time, I was also picking up Dr. Thunder at the same time from the Logan International Airport. But especially want to thank Dr. Thunder for being here with us. I only found out, you know, she was coming in that she had scratched her cornea. So I'm just very grateful that, you know, even though it's a little painful that she's here with us tonight. I do want to, she's going to give you some introductory slides about who she is because we've had the opportunity, I think, for some of the administrators and also the teachers that she's begun to work with throughout all year to know a little bit about who she is. But I just wanted you to, one or two slides just to know about who she is, where she's been published, the research she's done and the work that she's done in equity. And then we're going to go into and take a deep dive on the work that we've done, the data analysis, the report in itself. And then we'll be talking about plans for next steps. And at any point in time, if there are any questions, please feel free to just ask away, and we will do our best to answer them. So without further ado, Dr. Thunder.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm really thrilled to actually meet everyone in person and get to share about the amazing work that I've gotten to do this year. So as Dr. Chen shared, I'm going to share just a little introduction of myself. I have a little story by photo, and I think it's important to kind of know where my experience has been, both as a learner, as an educator, to bring me to this space, and then also kind of the journey of expertise that I've been trying to build up and bring into schools. So my photo story begins first with, I began school, I really wanted to be a writer.
Next.
And, thank you. I'm never going to remember that. I really wanted to become a writer, and I remember in middle school being told that writing was, if I was going to write about personal things, I should do that at home and not bring it into school. And I think many people have a bad math experience, and then that leads them into literacy. And I had a bad literacy experience, which then brought me into math. And so I majored in math, which you might find surprising because I actually failed Algebra I two and a half times. So I have like a deep experience with not necessarily positive and encouraging access to math and to literacy. But I maintained this love of reading and writing and math. I was, tried to push me into teaching high school math. I taught Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II for a program called Upward Brown, which tries to broaden that pathway for learners, and it was fabulous. But I also really wanted to teach young kids, so I taught second grade, and then I was a math specialist. I got my doctorate in math education and became a professor at James Madison University, which is where Dr. Almerod is. So we worked together for a while. I became director of the Central Virginia Writing Project. And then I just couldn't be away from kids as much as I had to be, to be at a university. And so I tried to straddle all things, teaching pre-service teachers and math specialists, coaching, and being in the classroom with pre-K students. So I was in, back in with four-year-olds for seven years, and I, during the pandemic, got to teach three, four and five-year-olds virtually, as well as a middle school math course. And then now I am actually out of the classroom, but I'm in many classrooms all throughout every day in, across the US and beyond, getting to work with school divisions. And I don't know how long I'll be able to stay out of the classroom full-time, but it's lovely. And when I go home, I go home to those two lovely faces, Anna and Adam. So my research has been very deeply around instruction and curriculum, math and math across all grade levels and early childhood. I've also spent a lot of time, thank you, looking into equity. What are the learning experiences of kids who are typically historically marginalized in mathematics? And how do we make sure that we create equitable spaces? And a lot of that work, next, thank you, is around how to support teachers, how to leverage their expertise and how to invest in them to make sure that they feel like they can create the change that we know that needs to happen to include all learners in math learning. And so I've actually recently spent more time working on writing some books and connecting those books to professional learning with educators so that they have tools and can build the expertise that they're looking for and interested in. So I'm particularly excited to do work in math, work in equity, but also, you know, really leverage the brilliance of the educators that you have in Burlington. So that's where I come from. All right, so a little context. The partnership that Dr. Chen pulled me into began in October after you all received a report from the, around Equity, the Equity-Based Needs Assessment Report. And the focus on that report really was around equity and access in math and across the system. So math was one content area, but looking carefully at what are the expectations in advanced coursework and other coursework, what happens with multi-tiered systems of support, UDL, work in that space. And so with that context in mind, I partnered with Dr. Chen to really kind of think through what could be two goals for this math curriculum review.
Next.
Thank you.
Next.
The first goal was to make sure that we could maximize the impact of math instruction for every learner and to make sure that we have policies in place, practices in place that really make that happen. And then the other goal is, next, is to make sure that the policies and procedures, kind of that systematic space of math instruction is equitable and supportive for everyone. So the three success criteria that we have, you can click all three with three if you'd like, that guided the process from this year were to analyze the math curriculum, to really look to see what are its strengths, because there's lots of strengths, what are specific areas of need? And then also, what do we want to revise and refine around math course pathways, particularly thinking around this Algebra I space? And then make recommendations for what kinds of revisions to make. Across that time, next please, I relied on five primary sources. So five spaces where I was gathering information throughout the year. I had quantitative data, things that are kind of available publicly, and then also internal data sets from Burlington. I was able to observe in two early childhood classrooms, 11 elementary classrooms, seven middle school and seven high school classrooms. And then I also was able to analyze qualitative data from interviews, focus groups with over 50 stakeholders from various roles across Burlington. I also relied on educational research. So you'll see research drawn from NCTM, visible learning, and then the broader space around what works best. And then we also had the Math Curriculum Review Committee this year that met monthly. And there were about 22 educators from a variety of roles that all, when we met, we did data analysis and they were major contributors to, contributors to these recommendations. One of the big pieces that we did was we worked on creating a math curriculum belief statement. And so that's here, you can see it. It's in three categories around our curriculum, the learning, our approach to create equity, and our learners, making sure that they're thriving.
And I want to pause right here because this is really important. Anytime you get a group of folks together, especially from pre-K through 12, because this belief system, when you all agree upon it, and it's based on Dr. Conti bringing the learning, the equity and the thriving, what it does is every single policy practice that we take a look at, it's matched against our belief system. So we always ask the question, well, if we do this particular task, does it do this? So that is what we hold up against. So we had to start there because we haven't done a curriculum review for about more than 15 years. So we needed to start in a place in which, okay, what does it mean for us to have a math learner when they graduate by the end of Burlington High School? What is that going to look like? And how do we have a common belief system? So there was time gathering and making sure that this belief system actually came from our educators. And this is when we start taking a look at the curriculum and taking a look at our analysis, we're going to be asking these questions, do it meet these particular success criteria?
Very nice. So this became the central core of our work that we compared everything to. Next, please. We did several data analyses. In particular, we looked at disaggregated data sets from MCAS and from math course enrollment at the high school. And we looked to see, are we current, in our current reality, how are we fulfilling this belief statement that we have, this vision that we have for all of our learners in math? And we found that we're not fulfilling that curriculum belief statement for learners with disabilities, for Black and Hispanic learners, and for learners who are economically disadvantaged. We are fulfilling the belief statement for English learners, English learners whose heritage languages are Hindi, Guharti and what's labeled other, but not for learners whose heritage languages are Portuguese and Spanish. And then we're partially fulfilling, so some parts of that math curriculum belief statement are fulfilled for learners when you disaggregate based on gender, but there are still some disparities to investigate. And so knowing that we have room to grow, right, we have some space and we have some really intentional work to do was part of our data analysis to really, you know, all agree on where we see we are working right now and what we want to do next. So next, we came, across all of that data and all of that work, six themes came up. And those themes helped to really create the recommendations, which you're going to see next. Okay, so the six themes, the first one is interactions. Every single educator, learner, learner, learner interaction that I observed across all of the instances, formal and informal, what I was observing in here, were positive and respectful. And that is a phenomenal thing to say about a school division. It's really amazing. The learners were engaged, right, so they may have been compliant, they may have been fully actively engaged, but they were all engaged, and that is also amazing. And every single person that I spoke with, every participant that was, you know, from emailing, interviewing, focus groups, when I asked about the strength, the strongest resource of the school district, they said the educators. And that's amazing as well. So leveraging those strengths is something that we'll make sure that we do in our math work. Next. And so the next five are themes of spaces where we can kind of look to see what are some areas of need, some things that we want to address. So one was clarity and alignment. So you're going to hear me say most and many. So many, when I say the phrase many, I mean 50% or more of participants. When you hear me say most, that means 75% or more of the participants. So most educators said, we need some curricular cohesion, we need some clarity, we need some vertical alignment that as kids are moving through the school system, we want to make sure, especially at those transition points, that we have this alignment so the experience of learners is cohesive. And we also, there is kind of a list of four things that educators really wanted some clarity around. The math specialist roles and responsibilities, the use of the math textbook and other curricular enhancements, the use of math assessments and data systems, and then expectations around completing Algebra I, either at the middle school, through outside sources, or at the high school. Next. And then the final space for clarity and alignment is around looking to see what are some instructional strategies that we could build from pre-K through 12 to support those learners for whom we're not fulfilling the math curriculum belief statement? What are some things that we could do that would create that clarity and alignment and help all of those students move forward? Next. The next theme was around how rich in resources and data Burlington Public Schools is. And then kind of on the flip side of how do we make sure that we build the expert knowledge of educators around those resources and the data so that they can use it to drive decisions? Right, how could they make sense of what are the data systems that we have so that they can be responsive to learners? Next. The fourth theme was around allocation of time. So every educator shared with me a concern around how time is allocated. So maybe there's too little time to collaborate or too little time to teach math or to intervene on math that competes with reading, trying to figure out what's the right amount of time to help kids move from initial understanding to mastery. A lot of time spent on assessing, so what's, how do we actually allocate time? And time is something that we can't really make more of, right, and so how do we maximize that time and really value that time in the right ways for our learners and for our students? Next. The theme of differentiated expectations came up. So at the high school, there were different expectations communicated to learners depending on which math class you were in. There were lower expectations and a lack of student clarity around the learning goals in the ELL math classes, Essentials in Algebra and other college prep level math courses, whereas there was higher expectations, really clear teacher-student knowledge around the learning goals and access to grade level content in the honors levels courses. And those kind of differentiated expectations you could see within the course offerings as well. Next. The final theme is around implementation with fidelity. So we talked about this a fair bit as a curriculum team, that there's a difference between implementing with fidelity, which is what a textbook series will tell you, or a company will say, here's how to implement this, and then implementing with integrity, which means bringing, leveraging your brilliance as an educator and the resources and the data and who students are and matching those. And so many, most, most of the elementary educators had concern about how do they marry implementation to create integrity in their implementation, something that's responsive to learners and making sure that they know learners and then respond instead of just doing. So based off of those themes and the work with the math curriculum team, I have 10 recommendations to share with you. They're kind of, they're organized into three spaces. One is around roles and responsibilities. One is around vertical alignment and pathways, and then the other is around structures and systems. And then there's a 10th recommendation around making sure that we continue to reevaluate over time and reassess. So I'm going to give you a quick overview of them. Also, at any time, you all should feel free to ask a question or clarify something because I'm sure, I'm sure there's many things that you're thinking of. All right, so first round roles and responsibilities. The first recommendation is to make a K-5 math coordinator role and have plan to expand that role to the pre-K 12 math coordinator role sometime in the future. So right now, there's this really strong need to focus on K-8, make sure that transition from elementary, having four elementary schools moving into one middle school, that that gets really strongly aligned. And then in the future, creating a role that would help to create that cohesion and coordination across pre-K 12 would be really helpful for that cohesion and alignment. Next, please. The next recommendation is around clarifying and communicating the roles and responsibilities of the math specialists and the math interventionists that exist. So making sure that it's clear who is coaching, who is providing intervention, and then what level of expertise do those people have as they, and what kind of training do they have as they're trying to really serve teachers and students and then students who are in need of intervention? So one of the spaces that we landed as a curriculum team was that the math specialists would be primarily coaches and support teachers and therefore support students. And secondarily, they would support with intervention. And that math interventionists would kind of take on what have been math tutors, and they would provide tier two and tier three intervention, but they would have a level of expertise in teaching or teaching math that would help make sure that that impact of intervention was actually happening. The third recommendation is to figure out a way so that the pre-K middle school and high school also have access to math specialists and math interventionists. So right now, there are math specialists in the elementary schools and there are math tutors in the elementary and middle schools. And so how can we make sure that there's kind of this equity of access to these experts and to this, this coaching role and this intervention role? So in the recommendation, I kind of explored some options for how to make that happen as well as considering how to place at the middle school of math specialist and a math interventionist. Next, thank you. The next three recommendations are around that vertical alignment and the pathways. So the first one is to make sure that we create and sustain a math course pathway that makes sure every learner has the access and the opportunity to complete Algebra I and Geometry in Burlington Public Schools by the end of 10th grade. And that's because that's when the MCAS is, right? So the state of Massachusetts has an assessment that assesses material through Algebra I and Geometry at the end of 10th grade. So we want to make sure that every kid is in the best possible space to do well on that assessment, but also we want to make sure that every student has access to what is considered grade level content. And so other things to consider to help make that happen is not waiting until ninth grade to really think about Algebra I and geometric reasoning, but to expand algebraic reasoning and geometric reasoning and emphasize that across pre-K 12 so that kids are getting to really experience that and access that over time. And then to also make sure that our English language learners are able to access grade level standards, wherever they may be, as well as learners with disabilities, that they can access grade level standards. Next. The next recommendation is around defining the highest level of math learning. So for, this is a decision that the district can make around what will be the highest level or the highest levels of math learning in Burlington. For some places, that's calculus. For some school districts, that's around data science. That's, data science is actually used in a large, large, vast array of professions, far beyond calculus, which you may have had that experience. And thinking about, well, what are the math pathways that support CTE courses, right, and CTE post-graduation? So after deciding that, how can we emphasize that reasoning pre-K 8 to make sure that that is really an emphasis in our math classrooms? And then looking at the course offerings in the high school, how can we kind of And then looking at the course offerings in the high school, how can we kind of trim that and help focus that also into making sure that all of our courses really emphasize this highest level of math learning? Next. The last recommendation in this vertical alignment piece is around making sure that we're vertically aligned in our teaching and learning, particularly at transition points, pre-K, K, fifth, sixth, and then eighth and ninth. And really, the heart of that work is around thinking about tier-one math instruction. What you want to do when you first teach a child is make sure that they learn it the first time, right? That's the biggest impact. And so we want to really refocus and reinvigorate that tier-one math instruction to make sure that the first time kids see something, we're doing our very best work to match it to them. So thinking about how can language and representation be a major part of our work? How can understanding by design help empower all this brilliance that we have in educators, right? And help them to be those decision makers who know, okay, these are the big ideas of third-grade math. How can I connect that with my third graders? And then we move into the three recommendations around structures and systems. So one is around allocating time, so making sure that when we're going to invest in our teachers, that we allocate some time to allow them to actually grow as educators and collaborate. We know that collective teacher efficacy, actually, when you bring teams of teachers together and give them time and the tools to create impact in their learning, in their students' learning, they're actually four times more likely to have that impact. So how do we do that systematically? How do we create time to make sure that tier-one math instruction is the time that we're really going to focus on? And that we're going to also make sure that professionally, you have the time to work and collaborate and learn. The next recommendation is around reestablishing the multiple tiers of support systems. So I know their MTSS exists, but really thinking through carefully, how do we reestablish it? How do we make sure that what we're doing in to determine what's happening in tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three is really intentionally focusing on tier-one instruction and then providing intervention that's in addition to, but not instead of, that tier-one instruction? And that we're really systematic in identifying learners and then matching them to exactly the intervention they need so that they don't stay in intervention for forever, right? But that they actually like accelerate their learning and close that gap and return into just needing tier-one instruction, because that would be a great goal, right? So some of the pieces of that, that's like a really large endeavor to take on, but it's actually something that is happening in the high school level around SEL. The SEL MTSS is really phenomenal, so I think there's ways that we could leverage that. And then really think through what are our assessment tools and the data team that would use those assessment tools to make those decisions? I think we could be really strategic in that work. And then finally, communicating with stakeholders, right? Because we know, you know, schools exist for students and their families, right? And we want to make sure that they understand, so here are the pathways, and you know, here's how we're making sure that every learner has access, every learner. And every learner is being met with really impactful, powerful math learning and teaching. And that means not just math teachers, but also thinking about all the people that are teachers of math. And then thinking about all of the people that help get kids into courses, including school counselors. How do you connect with them? How do you empower everyone to be decision makers? And then finally, there's no end to the work, really. But thinking of, how can we establish a progress monitoring plan to say, okay, so here's what we're going to try. Here are some of the changes we're going to make, here are the things we're going to refine. And then in three years, we're going to check in, here's what we would like our data to look like. Here's what we would like to hear from stakeholders, and then actually check in to see if we're hearing that. We could check in in five years, we could check in again in ten years. Because one thing that we know is we can intend all sorts of things, right? With changes that we make to systems and structures and instruction, but then we need to measure the impact. So we need to constantly be checking back in to see, is the impact that we're having matching that intent? Okay, how do we adjust things to make sure that they are having the impact we intend to have? So that's everything. The end is just the beautiful appendix with all of the data analyses, which I'm happy to share with you, but... And then the last slide has a bunch of references as well. So that was a whole lot of me talking. What kinds of questions can I answer, or what else can I add? What would you like to know more about?
I can start us off, Dr. Thunder, and I'm sure once I break the ice, people have other questions.
Good, thank goodness.
A lot of districts in Massachusetts are struggling with the equity access outcome sort of questions that clearly that you found some evidence of here. There've been conversations about unleveling, deleveling, or not. And that seems to cause a lot of challenges. So I just want to be clear, that's not what you're discussing here, but you're talking about having a curriculum that provides more clarity and then sort of more structured outcomes. And so we're matching the experience to the students? So again, I just want to be clear, and I don't want to put words in your mouth. But again, there have been some real kind of blowups in regards to the math conversations. And again, I'm happy the direction this is going, but I just wanted you to provide some clarity as well.
Yeah, I think we all want, we all want what's best for our kids, right? That's what every family member or teacher wants. And so thinking of, that means that if you're ready for certain challenges, that you're met with those challenges, right? And if you're ready for other challenges, that you're met with those challenges. And so I think historically, everyone with really great intent to meet learners where they are, we've created lots of options to try to make that happen. But without alignment and clarity, what we've ended up doing is lowering expectations or changing the content so it's no longer grade level content. And by doing that, we're not necessarily being responsive to kids' needs. We're sort of preemptively saying, I think this is what you're going to need, right? And then maybe it is, or maybe it isn't. And then what ends up happening is sort of, you know, we've lowered our expectations, and then kids, some kids are meeting that lowered expectation because they never have access to the grade level content. And so this conversation is around making sure that, you know, let's maintain those high expectations, but let's also maintain those high expectations for every student. And so we could have a leveling conversation, but that's not really in this recommendation, in these recommendations. The recommendation is around thinking, okay, if these are our goals, this is what we believe for our learners, are we making that happen? And if we're not making that happen, what can we adjust? And some of that adjustment is saying, you know, well, if these are the standards for Algebra I, are we making sure that every student who is in Algebra I is actually accessing that content, right? And if they are not able to, are teachers provided with the resources, the professional learning, and allowed to have the space and the decision-making power to meet kids and help scaffold or support to make sure they do reach that grade level content? And then there's really strategic ways to make sure that we intervene, but sometimes it feels like, well, you could intervene on everything, right? And so making sure, again, that we empower our educators to know, well, these are the most important things to intervene on, and here's when and how it would be most effective so that we don't have to guess. You know, we know the answers to those questions. So that's, and I think, I'm hoping I answered that question of, I know, we're not really like talking through, what tracks will exist, what levels will exist, but trying to make sure that every kid, you know, we can't predict just because of certain demographics that you have as a learner, we can't predict, okay, so then you'll have taken Algebra I as a senior. And across other demographics, you'll have taken Algebra I, you'll have skipped it, you didn't even have to take it.
So I can add to that by just giving a more specific example, Dr. Conti. When we're taking a look at the data analysis, there are like really four big topic areas when you look at the math curriculum, especially at the elementary level. And you can help correct me if I'm saying them wrong, number and number sense, computation, algebraic thinking, and geometry, right? We do a really great job of number and number sense and computation. But we need to push a little bit more when it comes to the algebraic thinking and geometry. There are certain standards that we may not need to touch upon so much, but what we're finding out is we're very strong in these two areas, but we haven't really taken a harder look in these other two areas, right? And so when we start taking a look at this report, and we start taking a look at our data, what we begin to have conversations about is, this has to be looked at pre-K through twelve, right? So in looking at that, this is not, if we want to prepare students for Algebra I, let's say, at the middle school, then we need to take a hard look at what's going on prior to all that. And that's what we're talking about when we talk about pathways, for instance. For instance, when we start beginning conversations about putting Algebra I in the middle school, are we going to be, is it going to be grade six, and then grade seven and eight combined, and then Algebra I? So what is that pathway going to look like? What are those standards, right? It's taking a relook at aligning all of our standards. So we want all of our students to end up here. So if calculus or data, however it is, what we identified as this is the ultimate goal that we want our students then, have we systematically, pre-K through twelve, identified those power standards? Because you can't teach everything. Have we identified those power standards and said, the non-negotiable is that by the end of grade one, students will be able to demonstrate this, this, and this? And if they're not, then what are we doing to help achieve that? At grade two, are we demonstrating this, this, and this? And so be very, very clear, not only our data points, because what we've also found out is that we collect a lot of data. So how much time is being spent on collecting the data means that's that much time less with teaching, right? And so based on, and is the data that we are collecting impactful and helpful in making the decisions? And who are the people, once we've given them the data? Who are the people making the decisions? Are we empowering the teachers to help make the decisions of the students in front of them? So we're not talking about deleveling or anything like that. We're talking about creating the pathways that are necessary for every child, right? That's what equity work is, all about looking at our special education students, our L students, all of our students, to make sure that they have the opportunity to achieve at the highest levels. What I've heard from parents is that, oh, gosh, my child has to do Russian math because of this. I really don't want parents anymore to have to go to Russian math. So our ultimate goal is to have a curriculum that is rigorous enough, challenging enough. I'm not saying that it's not rigorous, but to challenge those who need to be challenged so that really, we're not depending on Russian math, right? It should be, because of the equity, it should be what we give our students. And I think that we are meeting them in some areas, but in other areas, we are, like what Dr. Thunder said, we are very data-rich here, we have a lot of great stuff here, but the alignment, we just need to do a much better job of. And that's what we're going to be focusing on. And then Dr. Thunder's going to be with us for about four days here, two days starting tomorrow. So it's going to be tomorrow and Wednesday, Thursday, right? And then again, in July, we're going to be asking the administrators to attend about two hours because what they're going to be talking about is, what is, how are we thinking about when we do a task design? When we do a lesson plan? What are we thinking about our power standards? And so that conversation is going to begin tomorrow. And so we've got a group of teachers, very excited about all the teachers. This was one of the areas in which we put a stipend out, we asked teachers to come during the summertime. So we have representation all the way from pre-K to all the way to high school. Really a strong bunch of teachers who are interested and invested. Our math specialists are going to be there. And we're going to be working on taking a look, a hard look at our curriculum and starting to move forward. And these are baby steps because this type of looking and taking a look at our curriculum, it doesn't happen overnight. And so I don't want people to feel nervous, or parents, or even teachers to feel nervous that all of a sudden, when they wake up, everything has changed. It is, it's done to be very thoughtful, it's done at where we are, to take a look through this report where we are, and then to move steps. And then along the way, then we're going to bring back the administrators so that they can be the instructional leaders and be part of that conversation about how are they going to start beginning to roll out what our expectations are of what a unit plan may look like? And this is going to be done very slowly and intentionally so that people aren't going to freak. That's the last thing we want people to do. But we want at least to put, start putting, I would call the, when you plant a garden, start putting the seeds, weeding out things, and growing it. And then also this year, we're going to start continuing, getting another group to start talking about the Algebra I pathway, okay? That's going to go really, we're going to do a lot of hard work on that this year. But to me, this is just really exciting work. Anne Kateri also is going to be working with, giving professional development to all of our math specialists. This is going to be done virtually, when she can't be here. This will be done once a month. And we, this is hearing it from the committee, the committee would like them more so to be coaches. Right now, they're serving more as interventionists, right? So you've got your most talented people, for instance, with great expertise, but they're not helping to leverage their learning, right? So in order for, to make that model happen, the first step is providing those math specialists, through Dr. Thunder, with what does coaching look like, right? How do you reach all teachers? What is the mechanism in which you're going to be coaching? What does effective feedback look like? What are the areas of concern you may see at the elementary level? And how do you have effective discourse with your teachers? And how do you lesson plan with them effectively? So these, we've built a couple of topics, we started to talk about a couple of topics that we've built in. Like Kateri's going to be working once a month with our math specialist on. So we've got three different areas. We've got the curriculum piece, we've got taking a look at Algebra I and that pathway, and also the coaching that needs to be done with our math specialist. And in that, the work that we're going to be starting tomorrow, which I'm very excited about, we're also going to take a look at the amount of time that we're spending on looking at data, right? And saying, is it giving us the impact? Are we collecting too much data? Are there some areas in which we can collect less data and still have the same amount of impact? And the answer is answered so that some of that time can be returned back to teaching.
Any questions?
I have a, oh, God. I'm sorry. I just want to say thank you, this was very extensive. I had briefly read it before, but it was really great to see you present. I'm an elementary school parent, and I think the fidelity versus integrity really spoke to me, and I think it's important. I've, ST math is kind of something that we're all wondering, why is my kid spending so much time on this iPad? So I love that we're talking about that. To kind of, I think, allude to what Dr. Conti was getting at, I'm happy, I'm excited to see these recommendations for the folks out there. I think this sounds much more like we are moving frameworks and we are moving timing, but we're not dramatically changing what we're teaching or how we're teaching it. There's no new math, right? Like we're teaching it just maybe in different ways, we're looking at moving staff. So I think, I think that feels really good to folks that we're just kind of trying to make sure what we have is the most effective, but there isn't going to hopefully be any sort of dramatic, there's no new math again. So I think this is really great. And you sort of answered my question, like what's next? And it sounds like we have this kind of power group that is going to start looking about how we implement these recommendations. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I, I, one thing that we often forget about teachers is that they take their coursework to become a teacher in math, and then they go to teach, and they're presented with students and standards and a textbook. And the reality of the classroom changes every year, right? And so we need to really like support them, like you're saying, to make those decisions, to say, okay, I'm not necessarily teaching something that in second grade is new. It's just making sure that what I'm supposed to teach in second grade, I teach. And I teach it in the best way possible to match these learners. And then it's not just because the textbook said to do this thing, and I just blindly implement that, right? But that I have the power and the knowledge to say, here's what I need to know about my second-grade students to make this decision of, how do I keep meeting them where they are to push them forward, to make sure that they're all successful? So yes, definitely, like nothing, nothing new, nothing crazy, but making sure that what we say we're going to teach, we teach, and that kids actually learn it, and that we do what we need to, to make sure if they don't. And then the power team, yeah, the next steps I'm very, very excited about because I think the conversations in the next two days even will be eye-opening, looking at, well, here's what the standards really are. How does that compare with what's really been happening? And then how do we make sure that we maximize instructional time? How can we make assessment, something that is happening, that is part of learning, and not the separate time that interrupts instruction? And I think we also did so many great things during the pandemic to shift this unknown space of having virtual learners or learners that couldn't interact, but now we're back. And so there's some things that we started doing during the pandemic that we're maintaining doing, and we need to let go of because now we're back in person. And then there's some things that we did pre-pandemic that we couldn't do and kind of have forgotten about, and we need to bring them back. and we need to bring them back.
Yeah, so Melissa, you made the punch. So happy to hear about less iPad time. My question is really just about that fidelity, integrity, and how are we still going to capture the metrics behind, you know, where the ST math is kind of automating those data collection mechanisms for us to get to that efficiencies where the teachers aren't handwriting or inputting data manually? How are we going to do that? And then my second part of my question is, how are we going to ensure cohesion across elementary schools? So as folks get to that transition from five to six, that we're starting kind of level set in, in sixth grade?
Yeah. So tomorrow, we're going to, well, there's two things I want to make sure I point out. Tomorrow, when we do this work tomorrow and the next day, and then in July, we're going to do a little work around common formative assessments. So as agreed, level saying, here are the major chunks within a unit of learning. Here's where I need to make sure I've checked in with my learners so that I can make adjustments across time. And how can those, common meaning the same, across a grade level in each classroom? How can I have those be part of learning? And then be really efficient in looking at it and analyzing it and knowing, okay, here's my next step. But then also, how can that be something that's documented so that the math specialist, math interventionist administrators know about it and can use it? That's like, there are all so many places. But I think from the interviews and the meetings in the Math Curriculum Review Committee, Burlington's done that before. And so I think it, you know, it's like one of those things that during the pandemic, we couldn't really do that, right? We had to, we had to leverage other things and prioritize other things. And so we're just going to bring back that brilliant knowledge that's just been kind of stored and bring it back to the forefront. The other thing we talked about was there's a lot of, there's several different types of assessments that exist, different assessment tools that are being used. And so how to kind of streamline that to make sure that from K through 12, pre K is like a little, little other beast, but potentially pre K 12, we just have one single math assessment tool so that everyone, administrators, teachers, math specialists, they just have one thing to learn how to use. And then we can kind of watch and see over time how our kids are growing. And making sure that that is something that can, again, maximize that instructional time. So we want it to be something that is, has a universal screener, but is also diagnostic, something that is criterion referenced, meaning it's comparing how kids are doing to the standard, not just to like other kids their age. And that it helps us to see growth and achievement, because we want every kid to be growing. We want every kid to be achieving. Some kids need to grow a little bit more in a year than other kids. But we want to make sure they're all growing and moving forward, right? And then also making sure that we have systems in place that we're actually looking at that data and using it to make decisions, because it exists. And we looked at lots of it, but it's not necessarily informing what are we doing? And so if we spend all this time assessing and then just leave it over here, it's, it's not really worth the time that it took to do the assessing. So how can we embed it? And then how can we make sure that we actually use it?
And Jeremy, I think you hit on a really good point, because we use different types of assessments, I think, in the elementary, middle, and then at the high school. And I think what I've heard from teachers is that, well, well, if we use this at the elementary, it really doesn't help us, right? Because it's really hard to take something that's norm referenced when the, the middle school and high school are using something that's more criterion, you know, measuring against the standard. And so what Dr. Thunder has recommended is that, that we use just, you know, one, and we figure out what it is, right? That is criterion-based, that measures against the standard, right? So for elementary schools, that isn't norm, norm reference, that we set the norms, but it's really based on the standard and the mastery of the standard. And that consistency is then going to allow for, if I'm a sixth grade teacher, for instance, and I'm getting this data, it's going to make more sense to me. And then especially in the eighth and ninth grade. So I'll, I'll tell you that next year, for instance, because the middle school uses iReady. I'm just using that as an example. It could be whatever we decide, right? In the end, that Katie Whitcomb is going to use iReady also and provide it to all her ninth and 10th graders as well, too, as another data point, because she's already received this as a data point. But then she wants to use this in the ninth and 10th grade for all of her. She's going to provide that, also give it to all of her ninth and 10th graders, just to see, again, where they meet in the standards and what has their area of growth been? And to compare that to what the report she had received in eighth. So it's a, it's a nice transition. So we just, I think we all need to be speaking the same language.
Anyone else?
I just, I was going to say that it seems, I mean, you've covered everything pretty articulately. I, you had mentioned something about, again, you set, what I like is you're setting the standard for, let's say, each grade. But you had mentioned something about the books or, you know, using them to a certain extent or not. I don't know if you can expand on that to a certain degree, because I always feel like, you know, students learn differently, and I think there are a lot of teachers who teach differently. And I love to see teachers being able to teach to their strengths. And so how are we going to help, you know, our teachers teach to their strengths to hit those goals, you know, with those students who also learn differently, right?
Sort of differentiating for students and teachers, right? Yeah, allowing, allowing for that. Well, I think the work that we're going to do in understanding by design, which is making sure that we're all clear about the desired results, the standards, and then how will we assess that? And then what are the, the resources available? Will be a step to empower teachers with that knowledge. And then, so the textbooks will definitely be there, right? Because the textbooks are a powerful resource. But learning how to leverage them as a resource is going to be really important. We also know textbooks, when you're a first-year teacher or you're new to a grade, right? Or you're, you maybe have alternative licensing, and that's how you became a teacher, that you need something, you need more support. Whereas someone who's been teaching, you know, elementary school for 20 years, you maybe don't need that textbook as much to rely on, right? It is a tool in your toolbox, not the tool. And then I think the question that you asked about, oh, no, no, I've lost it. Oh, about empowering teachers. I think this is the space where I was so excited when the math specialist said, we really want to coach, because that's really one of the spaces where you help teachers really grow, like shine as who they are, is to say, let me be in this space with you side by side and find out, so what's going well, what's hard? How are you using this data? How are you using these resources? What's something new that you need or want to learn to help meet your students and differentiate for them? And then the coach can differentiate the supports that they provide as well. And so I think learning how to be a coach is something that they were asking for, because they want to provide that support, and the teachers are also asking for that kind of a support. Coaching can help a lot with retention and with general morale, because you have someone that you share the space with. And it can be a lonely space being in a classroom and just trying every day to figure this out. So I think that coaching, that shift to say, math specialists are going to coach, they're going to also help with intervention, but they're going to have like a really focused role will help make sure that the teachers also get to be, you know, who they are in their classroom, because that's when we know that they're really meeting learners and letting learners be who they are in the classroom as well.
And I was going to say, by bringing another person in? Sometimes there's, the students might connect with that person in a different way. And, and again, that helps support the whole thing. So I love that concept, because like I said, you see the same teacher every day. You know, it makes it more fun when someone else comes in, and maybe they have a different way of presenting that clicks in your head. And I think that's really important, so.
What I've found, they also have like a different lens often. When I, when I, when I come into a classroom and I see something, I see something different than, like if Dr. Chen is a classroom teacher, she's, you know, laser focused on this day-to-day. And I come in and I say, oh, I'm noticing this and this. And then, you know, you can actually move that learning of how to be a teacher, how to have that craft forward.
Megan?
I want to thank you for this presentation. It's been really eye-opening and very informative, and you've really delivered it in a digestible way that I think that a lot of people can really wrap their head around what the plan will look like moving forward. I have a question about the tier two, tier three intervention and what supports programs that you think would be appropriate from a math perspective for the interventionists to have access to, to support students?
That's a lovely question. So it's one of the spaces where I think there's data for us to look at to help make a decision about what would be the, the most supportive, you know, tier two program, tier, tier three program to use. We have to kind of shore up tier one instruction first so that we don't make a decision about intervention when really we could resolve some of those issues and really kind of bolster that in tier one instruction. So I think that, that's one of the reasons why I said, well, this is like a big thing, figuring out MTSS and making sure that it's really reestablished well, because our first step is going to be to say, okay, tier one instruction, how can we help make sure we're differentiating? How can we make sure that we're using, you know, universal design for learning to make sure every learner has access and every teacher knows what they're teaching? They have that clarity in space. And then when we're in a space where, yeah, we feel like we've really worked on that tier one and it's strong, then we can look at the data and say, okay, our kids are typically having a hard time with this content or with this way of learning or with these types of representations. One of the topics that came up in the Math Curriculum Review Committee was around language, how important language is in math? How, as an English learner, but also just as a young kid, learning English period, right? Just all children learning the language of math. It's a challenge. And so much of, so much language is necessary to really conceptually understand math. And so how do we support that? So that might be a piece that is across all of tier ones. We'd have to think of what are some instructional strategies that we could use to leverage language in math? Where it may be that when we shore up tier one instruction, that we see many of those, the overall language challenges disappear, and it's only certain parts of learning math language. And then there would be a specific intervention program that could meet that need. So that sort of makes sense. So I don't really have like the ones that I would recommend right now, because I think we need to kind of see what happens after we shore up tier one and then look at the data. The process makes sense, so thank you.
Yeah.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, just one follow-up. I was taking a note, and I'm not sure I heard it correctly, so.
Do it.
Supporting either the calculus or data science, is it one or none? Or can you still do both concurrently? You know, again, as I heard that, my mind went to, you know, learners that after high school are going to go into an engineering track versus a computer science track? Or if someone doesn't even want to go to college, that they're still have, you know, the requisite skills needed to meet whatever track they're going to do after high school?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm so glad you asked that, because I very purposely put highest levels of learning. And that's because we could say, we want to make sure that calculus is a level and data science is another, like those are equally high, right? Or something else. But we want to make sure that as kids are, are living their lives through the school system, that they can make a decision about what they would like, as opposed to us deciding, here's what you get to have access to. And that they can change their minds, because, you know, they're teenagers or they're middle schoolers. And so, you know, they can have that moment where, where, you know, they could be like me and fail it three times and then still get to calculus as senior year. So how do you do that, right? How do you make sure that those pathways and options are available for learners? But I'm glad you said, yeah, absolutely, levels, because even, even universities won't agree that they're on a common highest level of math that they're looking for.
Thank you.
Is it my turn? Just on that last comment, we have a lot of students who want to reach calculus in their junior year. So that's, that's why it's so important that we get algebra into the middle school. But let me start. I took notes. I don't really have a question, I have comments.
Please.
So I, too, was a math major and a former math teacher at the secondary level. And a couple of things that you said made me chuckle. One is algebraic thinking and geometry, but algebraic thinking, people don't know what that is. I get it, I totally get it. I tease my kids sometimes, and I say, no, I'm lousy at foreign languages, but I speak algebra. And it's, like, I just sort of lit up when I heard you say elementary level algebraic thinking, that is just like so right. It is really where you need to be and where you need to go. And geometry as well. You know, there's no point in saving those topics. Teach them when the kids are little. So I really like that. I also like that you're talking about reorganizing, and Dr. Chen's been working on this, I know, reorganizing the, the topics in the middle school so that maybe you can combine seven and eight and have nine for, I, I don't mean that. I mean, combine six and seven and have eight for teaching a real Algebra I class. Not, you know, just sort of an Algebra I class, but a real one. And Russian math, I mean, hey, the kids do it because it gets them ahead, and, and they learn a whole lot more than what they're learning right now with what we've got. So I think we've got a lot of work to do. But it's difficult, because you've got kids that are really good at math, that are going to Russian math, and they're, you know, they're chasing to get to, to calculus in their junior year. And then there are other kids who, some don't really care. They're not looking at that goal. And, and some that are having trouble learning it. So you've got all these things that we have to pull together somehow in order to provide for all of them and not just some. And then the, my last comment is, I'm really glad you talked about textbooks, because some people just learn from textbooks. I'm one of them, you know? I, I could sit in the class and learn nothing, but you give me that textbook and I'll know it. So I, I'm really happy with what I heard tonight. I'm anxious to see progress and changes. And let's go back to that algebraic thinking at the elementary level. That is, that is the best thing I heard.
I'm so glad. Well, I think that actually brings us all the way to Dr. Conti's first question of like, what does this pathway mean? And it means exactly that, saying, let's make sure teachers know, what does it mean to engage in algebraic reasoning as a four-year-old? And then how do you continue that so that then when you hit algebra class, you're like, oh, yeah, I know how to do this, it's just different symbols? And the same with geometric reasoning. We know that often elementary teachers will drop off geometry. They'll say, oh, let's save that for later. Nope, we saved that till the end of the year, but we didn't have time. And then that creates this, this hole, that kids haven't been engaged in geometric reasoning all along, so that then when they hit Algebra I and geometry, they're not ready for it. And that, that's on us as educators, right? And so we can, we can definitely address that. And I, you know, I love a good textbook. I also love a textbook for, as a way to learn how to study, right? For, to be able to learn how to study, to be able to rely on that. But it's a tool, it's not the only thing that exists. And so I think making sure that we know educators are brilliant people. The number one message that I heard everywhere is around how amazing the Burlington educators are. And so we just need to provide the supports that they say they need and, you know, raise them up so that they can do their job exceptionally well, because they are trying so hard and they deserve to have the support. So thank you. Thanks for letting me be part of the, the work to do that. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Francis Wyman Used Bookstore Stipend. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a few stipends to clean up. And so by contract, if principals are supporting a stipend, they move forward in certain years. So we're moving two stipends forward this evening. So Nicole, you, you had spoken to Nicole McDonald about this. So again, Nicole is, Kasia is well aware of this. So I'd like to move the Francis Wyman Used Bookstore Stipend in the amount of $500 for year one. And this is work that Ms. Donna Murphy has been currently doing this school year 2324. So I'm recommending the school committee approve the Francis Wyman Used Bookstore Stipend in the amount of $500 for year one.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We moved and seconded. Any questions? Are there none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, similar at the high school, similar situation. There's a fashion club that Mr. Sullivan is supporting moving into year one. So I'd like to ask the school committee So, um, I'd like to, um, ask the school committee to approve a stipend for a fashion advisor for Danielle Truvey in the amount of $500 for year one.
Is there a motion?
No.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, are there any questions or comments?
Jeremy. Just a quick question, so I'm not really sure what a fashion club advisor is. Is it, is it a student demand thing where they're, the, we're getting to this? Or, so basically there's enough students taking the class that this is work they're doing?
Um, yeah, so with any club, um, as it goes through this process, it, all the clubs are dependent upon student participation. So at the high school and at the middle school, Mr. Sullivan collects, uh, every year from club advisors how many students participated. And then it's really almost a market-driven process. So there may be more clubs in the contract than we actually run depending on student interest. Um, some fall in favor, out of favor, um, for different student interests. So, uh, what I would say is, um, I'm assuming this might be a student-driven interest. Um, Ms. Truvey does the marketing and it might be a group that are interested in doing more work in regards to fashion. So, um, again, Mr. Sullivan will look at this at the end of next year. And, and again, um, the second year, Nicole, is, um, it's a three-year process. So it would be seven fifty next year and then placed in the contract at the right category. And if student interest continues, then the club will continue.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the superintendent evaluation, review and discussion. Um, do you want me to get right into this? Is there something you want to say? No. Okay, I hate it too. Um, okay, so.
Is Jeremy calling us again?
I know.
Who is it?
Jeremy. Jeremy's on, we had a message, I just got, just, yeah, answer it.
I was going to save it for the end of the night. Uh, you know what, I will save it for the end of the night, I don't want to steal my own thunder.
And, I thought that was off. Okay, now we get to do our annual evaluation of the superintendent. You will hear comments citing opinions that are similar, but you will also hear comments that diverge quite a bit. We have all written our own evaluations on the required form and I, as chair, have compiled them into a composite evaluation as we do every year. These scores are compiled from a majority of the five individual scores. Members' individual scores are not read. In fact, we are a committee. What we do individually is kind of meaningless, we only work as a committee. None of us on this board has been in the shoes of a superintendent. Frankly, none of us is qualified to do that job. But in the spirit of public officials, we have done our best to represent what we believe. Before I get into the form, I want to begin with a few facts. Dr. Conti has been our superintendent for sixteen years. Many things have evolved in our schools during that time. In addition to being our superintendent, Dr. Conti has been chairman of the lab program for about ten years. That board is made up of the superintendents from all the participating towns and one of them is chosen to be chair. Dr. Conti is a member of the Massachusetts State Superintendent's Association Executive Committee. And is the Massachusetts representative to the National Superintendent's Association, the AASA. So he's the one guy that represents us nationally. In the past year, Dr. Conti presented. He represented the Massachusetts Superintendent's at the request of the Massachusetts Secretary of Education, Patrick Tutwiler. On a panel exploring the impact of AI on education. The Secretary of Education chose Dr. Conti to represent him. He, along with Martha, our former chair, presented at the joint meeting of Mass Association of School Superintendents and Mass Association of School Committees. On our childcare program for staff members called Sprouts, which Dr. Conti implemented shortly after he came to Burlington. Usually I try to be very brief in my comments, but this exercise does not allow for that. The comments I read will be a mixture of direct quotes and paraphrased comments. Evaluation. Step one was ranked as follows. Professional practice goals were exceeded. Student learning goals were met. District, district improvement goals were exceeded. Step two, assess performance on standards. Instructional leadership exemplary. Management and operations came in on the line between proficient and exemplary. Family and community engagement was proficient, professional culture was exemplary. Step three, overall summative performance. A majority of this committee ranked the superintendent as exemplary. Keep in mind, these are compiled. Some members may have somewhat negative comments and others may have more positive comments. So now I'm going to read the comments that are reflected from the scores that I have already read. One member, this is on the, the part that I have read, which is basically the whole evaluation. It's. It's assess performance standards, assess overall cumulative performance. One member said, I believe that Dr. Conti is meeting the needs as the leader of our school district. He is a good professional role model for students and staff. I would like to see us really focus on being a strong employer in terms of employee support and development. We should be looking at how we can truly ensure that professional development is meeting the needs of both teachers and the district. Another commented, Dr. Conti demonstrates high ethical standards and integrity in all aspects of his leadership. He does his best to model fairness, honesty and accountability and sets a positive example for others to follow. Dr. Conti has demonstrated his ability to navigate challenges with resilience and has shown adaptability in response to changing educational landscapes. Societal needs and external pressures. A third member wrote, Dr. Conti is an outstanding superintendent. His dedication to his responsibilities is second to none. He is always looking for ways to improve the district. He does this by collecting information from multiple resources. And by reaching out to other superintendents to collaborate, finding ways to improve our district. He led us through updating the district policies. He is dedicated, thoughtful, intelligent and approachable. As an educational leader, he is strong. The success of our students continues to amaze me. And a fourth member said, Dr. Conti sets a very high bar for himself. His instructional leadership is excellent. He's a leader among his peers. He's been recognized both statewide and nationally for outstanding achievements. In addition to running an entire top-notch school system with six hundred employees and thirty-six hundred students. He is also working on two building projects and now a field complex. Each building committee meeting is also a joint meeting with the school committee, which results in Dr. Conti needing to attend three times as many school committee meetings as usual. Next is the superintendent's performance goals itemized. All were ranked either proficient or exemplary by most members. Comments on individual performance standards which were measured above standard one instruction. The MCAS presentation a few months ago showed one area that came in below the state average, which is very unusual for us. It was elementary science and was a result of a schedule change that needs to be modified. On that topic, one member ranked curriculum and instruction as needs improvement. Writing, curriculum areas were marked down based on MCAS scores falling below state average. I acknowledge there is a causal relationship due to time on learning decisions. However, falling below the state average on a quantifiable metric of educational outcomes must be addressed. Another member expressed, work is being done to increase consistency across elementary schools. I appreciate the deep curriculum level work being done. I would like to see measurable instructional goals across all subjects. Also, work needs to be done on the organizational chart of the district, including reporting structures and evaluation structure. Another member wrote, Dr. Conti empowers administrators to ensure all instructional staff collaboratively plan, adapt. And implement standards-based units comprised of well-structured lessons aligned to state and local curricula. He continually monitors and reviews progress. Then provides additional supports as needed. Dr. Conti sets high expectations for the quality of instruction. Instructional practices throughout the district are engaging, inclusive and personalized to accommodate diverse learning needs. He stays informed of new evidence-based instructional practices and provides resources and supports to implement them as needed. Another member wrote, Dr. Conti has demonstrated support for instructional improvement efforts. By promoting best practices in teaching and learning through data-driven decision-making. And is currently promoting student growth outcomes through the evaluation of Burlington's Math and Literacy Curriculums K to twelve. Now comments on the second standard, standard two management and operations. One member has concerns about our infrastructure system. He feels the current approach remains largely reactionary and lacks a comprehensive preventative maintenance plan. Aimed at ensuring the life cycle sustainment of critical building infrastructure. The same member feels the notification process for deviations from the planned busing schedule. Have not been adequately addressed through a standardized and codified process. Another member says, I am proud of the strides we have made in terms of diverse hiring over the past few years. I think the budget process is communicated very well and done very thoughtfully. Another member writes, Dr. Conti has prioritized, wait a minute, make sure I didn't miss anything. Dr. Conti has prioritized capital improvement projects based on the needs of our schools to ensure that facilities support educational programs effectively. Dr. Conti spends a considerable amount of time outside his usual duties. To attend building committee meetings and working group meetings for Fox Hill and Burlington High School. Dr. Conti continues to demonstrate a clear commitment to ensuring that safety of students and staff is prioritized. Okay, comments on standard three, family and communication. One member writes, the district remains predominantly reactionary in identifying areas requiring student intervention. Would like to place additional emphasis on implementing proactive measures and systems to identify at-risk students as early as possible. A second member writes, Dr. Conti continues to find better ways to communicate. Parent Square was launched and it provides a simple and safe way for the district administration, principals, teachers, staff and parents. To receive important school and teacher communications all in one place. It also provides two-way translations in the preferred home language of the parents. He also introduced a new pilot program, the Burlington Collaborative CAM model. The concept allows a mental health provider to be proactive in the school department with the ability to get involved and advocate for students. A third member wrote, family and community engagement can be difficult in such a diverse community and with so many languages spoken. Dr. Conti has made the extra effort to reach out to families even when it's not easy. When one young man decided to drop out of school, Dr. Conti called his mom in South America to engage her help in keeping the young man in school. It worked, he stayed in school and in fact, he just graduated. Dr. Conti established the newcomer program. Some of these high school age youngsters have very little or no formal education. This, this program closes the critical learning gap and sets these students up for success. Comments on the fourth and last, standard professional culture. One member wrote, needs improvement around district-wide buy-in from teacher and student and parent perspective. On curriculum alignment to end-user goals. Another member wrote, would like to see a more, more of a cohesive focus on a single district-wide direction and focus. The overall professional culture of the staff seems to vary at each school. The high school feedback seems to center around many teachers and administrators making their own rules with no accountability. There often seem to be no consequences or discipline for certain teacher actions. I would like to see a more cohesive approach to helping create a more disciplined and standardized culture and hierarchy at the high school. And consistency across elementary schools. I believe Dr. Conti does a good job of managing conflict and speaking to the entire community to build consensus. Another member wrote, I'm impressed by the executive team Dr. Conti has working for and with him. Their presentations to the school committee demonstrate their dedication, caring and professionalism. Dr. Conti keeps his, his cool when responding to conflicts or disagreements. He does not allow his emotions to get the best of him. A fourth member wrote, Dr. Conti promotes a culture of collaboration among administrators, teachers, staff and community members. He values diverse perspectives and encourages teamwork to address challenges and implement effective solutions. And finally, the last member writes, Dr. Conti's professional standards are impeccable. He is highly intelligent, extremely well-educated and a, and a kind, caring person. We are very lucky to have such a high-quality, outstanding superintendent. That, Dr. Conti, is the evaluation. So, um, comments, anyone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I really want to emphasize every year is any superintendent achievement is the recognition of the work of others. So many things that, um, I get credit for in this position, other people do the work and no. Three people, um, represent that more than the three people at this meeting now. Where there are situations or errors that we need to improve, then I have that responsibility. So I'm responsible for making those improvements and I do welcome that feedback. Any organization can get better and I think we need to, um, continue to do that. And, um, I'm responsible for the progress in those areas. But, um, again, a lot of the things that were mentioned tonight, um, we have very talented and dedicated people doing that work. So I just want to make sure I acknowledge that. And again, um, where we have errors to improve, I will take that responsibility on. Dr. Chen has been a really incredible add to the district. I think her energy has been rejuvenating, um, as you all witnessed this evening and very focused. And so, um, we, uh, again, just excited for the curriculum instruction work moving forward. Again, in particular, someone mentioned the budget presentation. We lived through a transition from, uh, in the business office and, um, we are, um, much more transparent. And the budget is so well-articulated now and that's Nicole's efforts in her office. And again, the facilities are vast and complex and, um, Bob manages, again, custodial crew, uh, CAF crew, all the operations in the, in the district. And I certainly couldn't, um, we, we wouldn't function as a district without his efforts. So Bob, thank you for, for all your efforts there. So, um, again, it's a honor to do this work. It's my chosen profession, but it's also a passion of, of mine. And so, uh, there's no better place, um, to do it and I've done it other places than, uh, than the community of Burlington. So I sort of thank you for the opportunity. Um, I'm humbled by the responsibility and by the, um, support of this committee and the community. And hopefully we can continue to make, uh, progress. So again, thank you for your feedback. And, um, and again, we couldn't accomplish anything we do without the talented educators you heard, um, about today. And that's from someone who came from the outside, um, our principals, our staff. And, uh, again, I, I get to take credit for, uh, a lot of hard work from, from other people, so, so thank you.
Okay. If there's no other comments, we'll move on. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, uh, facilities, finance, Fox Hill Building Committee update. Um, Melissa, you got anything there?
We just. We all just approved the schematic design about two hours ago now, so that's a very exciting milestone. That goes to the MSBA. Um, and they will review it and hopefully approve it at the end of August. So for anyone who has not been following along, uh, we have the Fox Hill Building Committee website. Please go back and watch our community meeting. Email me directly, anything, anything anyone needs, I hope it's been provided, we will be. We will be updating the website as well. I think the, for the most part, the public meetings of the Fox Hill Building Committee will be quiet over the summer as SD is, is kind of a final resting point there. We'll be working and communicating to ensure that we can fund the project in September.
Anyone else on Fox Hill? Okay.
Just Madam Chair, briefly, Ms. Masardo and representatives from Denisco and Dornwood Year attended the historical, is it commission or society?
Commission.
The historical commission last night and did a presentation of the school, and I think it was well-received, and we answered a lot of good questions, and they had a real interest in if the building project moves forward and if the, they're not, I don't think they're as concerned about the building itself, but if the site is disturbed and there are any artifacts found, they, they just want to be involved in that. So that was, I think, a very proactive and a positive conversation.
Yeah, can I just add? We do not need, nor did they ask for, any sort of permission to move forward. This was largely a courtesy. The building is less than 100 years old. It's not a historical building per se, so this was just a courtesy meeting with them to show them what the building could be. Again, they asked if we could do the same courtesy. If we dig up a tractor from 1800, please let them know. And that was, I think, what they're looking at, anything like that. And then they had some historical paneling or artifacts that maybe we could incorporate into a display in the media center or something like that. So they were all very excited, very passionate Burlington historians, so it was a cool meeting, yep.
Excellent. All right. Catherine, you got anything on Burlington High School Building Committee?
Just the next meeting is 7/11/24 at 6:30 PM.
Okay. I don't think there's anything on Pine Glen, except when's that AC going to be in, Bobby?
It's on target right now to be completed before return of school.
Okay. Any new or old business? Anything to come before the committee, Jeremy?
Just a couple of notes. As I was so rudely interrupting the feedback, the Marshall Simons Athletic Field Committee is beginning movement last night. I also was remiss in mentioning this. Recreation Commissioner was appointed or voted to be the representative from Rec Commission, Lindsay Carlson. And then I've also, with the help of Ms. Kuna, put out a Parent Square message and a code-red message soliciting community members to volunteer for the committee if they choose to do so. You can reach me at my PPS email, jbrooks@psk12.org, or mrkuna@rcuna@psk12.org. Yeah, that's all I had there. And then two other items, one.
Hang on one second. Are you including Megan in, in all of these?
Correct, yep, sorry.
You too. If anyone contacts her, she can.
Sure, sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep. Sorry, I lost my train of thought there. Yeah, I was contacted by a parent that has contacts with MIT that wanted to reach out and help with some of the software integration with the GPS app. We had a very good discussion, spoke with Ms. Kuna a little bit to see what the appetite was to possibly do some software integration where, in an automated notification of if a bus is behind by threshold of number of minutes, that alert goes out automatically through Parent Square. We're leaving the burden on some of the manual notifications moving forward. So with the committee's support, I'd like to investigate this, and then if I find something worthwhile, maybe bring it forward to a vote.
Is this in addition to what the bus company has to offer?
Correct, yeah. This would be, this would be a software integration to tie into Parent Square and then use the GPS data provided by the app to automate notifications.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Can I jump, just piggyback on that? Because my question was going to be if we can convene the Transportation Committee at some point this summer. Along those lines, with the new bus contract, I just saw you sent out the survey, but I really like, I know you guys looked at a software, like, I'd really like to look at the routes, efficiency-wise, especially if we have a new provide, like, anything we could do there, just to, we will have the app, so we might need to put out, like, best practices, right? We're going to need to be, don't come out your house when it's at your stop, like, three steps ahead, right?
Right.
So we may need to be communicating what the app's going to do, how does it interact with Parent Square, what the, I'd love to see some more, like, official route. I know, like, you literally just inundated at the end of August with, can you move my bus stop? So if we can do that a little bit more streamlined and more procedural, so I feel like there's a lot of things going into this bus schedules and things. I'd love to get them out a little bit earlier. There's, like, a lot of things we could do to improve the bus situation for August, and so I think sooner rather than later, start meeting on that.
And like I said to Jeremy, you and Catherine are on that Transportation Committee, so make sure you're working together.
Yeah, Bob usually convenes the Transportation Committee in the past, but, like, between the three of us.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Jeremy, you had something else?
Yeah, just the last thing. We had talked about it last year, the 20-year capital plan, bringing it forward. I'd just like to put another plug into that to kind of bring it forward so we can kind of chew on it, and then move something to get on the debt schedule for Ways and Means and the rest, to kind of move some of our capital projects to give better visibility for our warrant articles we've been pursuing over the next few years for infrastructure and whatnot. So if we can get that on the agenda sometime over the summer, it might be good.
So again, Madam Chair, that was whole business. You had mentioned that prior meeting, so I think it's going to be on the July agenda, so we'll give us some time.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else, new business, old business? This is old business, but I want to remind you and Nicole that I really want to see an update or some sort of a presentation on what's going on with the cafeteria, the participation before we brought in the food service company and the participation since. And I'm, I'm getting feedback that the high school, that's, the kids really still like the food, and the middle school, okay, but I'm hearing that the elementary parents and students are not especially happy. A lot, it sounds like there's a budget issue, and so some of the things that, like, Fox Hill might have treats, and another school might not have treats, and there's a lot going on that, like, some of the lunches at the elementary level are not making people happy.
So.
I was going to say, I've been hearing some of the same rumors on the elementary school level, that, that when it was launched, there was a lot of really new, good options, and everybody was happy, but what I hear is it seems like it's kind of fallen back to what it used to be. So can we look into that?
So again, I'm hearing two parts. I just want to make sure I'm being clear. So there's the financial participation piece, and we can certainly put that on the agenda. And then we can ask about some of the Whitsons for some of the suggestions for elementary, or we can give them some of that feedback and.
I think more than, more than looking for suggestions, what I'm looking for is what's actually taking place. Because what I'm hearing is that we had a lot of food when they started, and that they used a lot of that food, and that now, as time has passed, and it has, and more and more has to be purchased, that there's two components. There's a budget component which results in not buying as many of the innovative things that we were promised in the first place. So I'm just curious what's really happening, and I'm not sure how you'd find that out.
Well, we can certainly ask them and try to put that on a future agenda as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think, Marion, July's sort of shaping up already, so that's.
There's no rush. You can make it August. Is there anyone else for new business or old business? If not, then we do have need for executive session. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school district, and the chair so declares that it does. Superintendent Contract Vote is on this agenda. We will return to public session only for purposes of adjournment, and I would accept the motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
It's removed and seconded. Jeremy?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Chair votes aye when now in executive session.
Bob, mic's off or on?